This is an open meeting. Hosted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual open meeting act. We would ask that you stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
All right. First, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second? I have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. If you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, a request for approval of the full agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda. Again, if you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and on our agenda tonight, we have a couple proclamations, special presentations here. The first one to be Family Day. Proclamation for Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children. Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitute the greatest threats to the well-being of America's children, and whereas 16 years of surveys conducted by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse at Columbia University have consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs. And whereas frequent family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drugs. And whereas parents who engage in their children's lives through such activities as frequent family dinners are less likely to have their children who abuse substances. And whereas the correlation between family dinners and reduced risk for teen substance abuse is well documented, and whereas family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America, now therefore, I sue Fuqman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim September 24th, 2012, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children in the City of Norfolk. And I encourage all citizens, recognize and participate in this observance. Anyone here tonight to accept on behalf of? Okay. Seeing none then, we'll move to the next proclamation for Buddy Poppy Day. Whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies for the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, of the United States, has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the VFW is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, be it resolved that I sue Fuqman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2012, as Buddy Poppy Day in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska and the surrounding area. And I urge all citizens to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donation for Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifice of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. And I see no one in here yet either to receive this proclamation, so we'll make sure it gets to the rightful folks. Next, under special presentation, how about a 25th Street update? Dennis?
Continuing to make progress on 25th Street. All of the storm sewer and the water in the sewer are relocated except to correct our ups from last week, or two weeks ago. Contractors indicating that he's going to be working on paving on Prospect this week and then moving forward with the balance of the main line on 25th Street from Prospect to Artisan following right beyond there. Wasn't out there this afternoon, but the pedestrian bridge was supposed to be delivered around 2:00 this afternoon. So hopefully, the bridge contractor is supposed to be done by the end of this week, and then we'll move into finishing up the paving up on that area. Continuing to make progress and hoping for the best.
It's getting there. Any questions at all?
Dennis, this is kind of off-topic, but I was wondering, is there the progress on the new council chambers?
Not sure that I know the answer to that one.
Okay. I do, Councilman.
Well, we're continuing to make progress. Albeit a little bit slow, but the contractor is on board and he's been working down there, got the wall, hallway wall built, and we got the bulk of the air handling system done, at least the main trunking of their handling done, and electrical is moving forward, pretty good clip. So the next process will just finish up the electrical and then do the drywalling. Really, the lion's share of it is going to be once the finished carpenter gets in there to build the dais, is going to take a little bit of time, it's fine carpentry. So I'm still hoping towards the end of October, even though I told the council the end of September a few months ago, but I'm hoping for that first meeting in November that we're having, we're meeting there, Councilmen, so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Can we hold you to that?
You can, Mayor. You're the mayor.
November.
We'll try. We'll do our best.
Okay, all right.
Dennis, question, the traffic signals on Norfolk Avenue, any anticipated date on those? Maybe it was just this weekend, but seemed to be a lot of rolling or non-stopping stops going through the four ways, so.
We had a progress meeting today, and there was nobody there from the signal folks, and the general had forgot to get an update. So don't have a good update, other than the traffic signal bases have been poured in the last couple of weeks. So they're out there working on some of the conduit and putting the bases in, so I'm guessing that the polls are getting closer than they have were. But I don't have a date, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on either of the two subjects at hand? Okay, if not, let's move forward then to the presentation of the August 29th, 2012 report and recommendation of Ken Behrs Consulting, resulting from the request for proposal from the city's property liability and workers' comp coverage effective October 1, 2012. With that, Ken, we will turn to you and let you have the floor for a bit.
All right, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to visit your very pleasant city.
Thank you.
White Hood, home of Johnny Carson, I believe.
Yep.
Does not quite move me to do a monologue, but in any event, I am happy.
I'm not sure what you have sent next yet to help you out there either, so we'll forego the monologue and just let you speak.
Okay. Well, I am happy to report that the results of this project validate the council's decision to seek proposals through an RFP. Last year, the expiring premium was approximately $713,000. This year, we're seeing the most competitive premiums range between $600,000 and $610,000. So actually, the outcome was a bit better than I had expected. By way of review, we put this RFP process in motion back in April, selected five participants. They include the incumbent League of Risk Management Association, insurance associates from Norfolk, New Century Agency, Talon Country, and Arthur J. Gallagher from Sioux City. And I guess I really should thank all the agents that turned in proposals for all the work that they did and for putting up with the countless questions that I peppered them with after reviewing their work products. So we had put together specifications so that we would have an apples-to-apples comparison. Turned out, we did get like Granny Smith versus High Crisp versus Delicious Apples. And basically, the two most competitive proposals were from the incumbent and from insurance associates who use Travelers as their company. The combination that we reviewed was the coverages requested in the specifications plus an alternative new coverage called cyber liability, which would protect the city in the event that it compromised someone else's information that it may have in its files. So looking at the two, I guess finalists, we would say, we have a number with insurance associates, Travelers, including the cyber at $600,025, and with the League Association of Risk Management at $609,227. And ALARM also had some other alternatives which actually brought them down lower. But I thought it would be a good idea to just point out the difference in the two products. We're talking different products. One is commercial insurance. This is something that insurance associates is offering, and the other is a pooling approach, which the city has been with since 1994. Traditional insurance is offered by insurance associates is what's known as a risk transfer vehicle. And basically, for a more or less fixed premium, the policyholders completely transfer their risk to the commercial insurer over whatever deductible applies to covered claims. And the traditional selling points would be that insurance companies have been around for a very long time, have accumulated a lot of capital, high financial strength. Additionally, service provided through local agents who also could offer a choice of different insurance companies within their agencies. Now, until 1980s, this was pretty much the dominant approach for municipalities to buy their insurance, covering the property and liability risks. Drawback to that would be some very major fluctuations in year-to-year premium. And this occurred mainly when insurance companies had bad years after trying to write a lot of business. This occurred in the 1980s, but it's also occurred as recently as after 9/11, and there are some signs that this may be in the early stages of occurring at this point. So that's what happens when they have bad years, when they have good years, profits go to stockholders and also subject to income tax. ALARM is offering coverage as they have through a pooling mechanism where the individual members share risk among one another. So they contribute to what's called a joint loss fund. And they commonly insure this up to what's known as an attachment point where reinsurance takes over. Joint loss fund pays for routine losses, reinsurance pays for losses above. And currently, ALARM would pay property losses up to $100,000 with the exception of windstorm, which would be $200,000, and then the reinsurance kicks in. On liability, it's $300,000. On workers' compensation, it's $500,000. And companies that they have providing reinsurance are pretty strong companies. So basically, the major objective of these programs has been to stabilize member premiums. Beginning in the 1970s, there were relatively few of these vehicles. Today, there's close to maybe 400 of these throughout the United States. To some extent, they operate a little like the cooperatives around Nebraska. Would say that, at the same time, pooling has not been to the liking of every municipality, not reached the dominant level here as in other states. And some insurance companies like the Travelers still write an awful lot of commercial business. On the other hand, Travelers also writes a lot of business supporting pools as an excess or re-insure. So just to sort of refresh your memory on the distinction, which I think some of you may have been aware of, some of you may not have. In any event, it's a nice problem to have to really competitive quotes. I would say from a big-picture standpoint that it would make sense for the city to remain with ALARM. Number one, competitiveness of premiums, particularly when you look at some of the options for either longer commitment or higher deductibles. Also, from what I've seen, had long-term satisfaction with the service. Sometimes when you jump to new organization, your expectations are not always met. And Travelers does have an excellent reputation, but by previous polls of city members, you know, appeared that ALARM achieved some fairly high ratings. A big one here that is the fact that if you leave ALARM, you will be forfeiting your entitlement to dividends that you've earned in the past, or you may have earned, that would not be distributed until the future. You also lose the opportunity for any dividends that you may have earned for this 2012, 2013 period. None of the commercial insurance companies were offering dividends. And in the back of my mind also is, with a potential hard market looming, the generally better track record of pools at maintaining premium stability during that period of time. I mean, we do not know for sure whether year two would be higher premium with Travelers or with ALARM, but you know, just based on past history, it seems like most of the time the pools have been more successful in maintaining the stability. So I think that I would support remaining with ALARM. I would also support a longer-term commitment, which is consistent with past practice of the city's relationship with ALARM.
Okay.
That's kind of my overview. Any questions?
Sure. I'm counsel. Questions for Ken at all? Any clarification anyone needs, or if not, we'll move right then to consideration of the resolution, number 2012-34 regarding the city's participation in the League Association of Risk Management.
We get a chance for comment?
Certainly.
I want the resolution.
Well, it hasn't been introduced. I asked for it, but it has not yet, so.
Okay.
Yep. He should be speaking now. Yeah, Scott.
Okay.
I'm sorry, before I introduce the resolution.
Okay. Ken, it was nice to put a face to a name.
Likewise.
Yeah. My name's Scott Williams. I'm with Insurance Associates, and I have some prepared comments, as Ken did, and then would certainly entertain any questions that you might have as well. So what I'm, I guess what I'm doing, not complaining, but I'm just trying to step outside and maybe give some perspective from a interested third party looking in. And the issues that Ken outlined on the history of pools versus commercial insurance, we hashed those out here four years ago, I think, and by and large, I think everybody here will admit that in the 1980s, leading up into the 80s, there were problems with the standard insurance markets, with availability of coverage, and something needed to change, and I firmly believe it did. So anyway, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity, the hard work that staff and you as counsel put in to, and the courage it took to say, "We want to bid this, we want to, we're end up forfeiting some dividends," as I understand it, and you spent a bunch of money with loss of dividends and Ken's time and staff time. So anyway, I want to thank you all for that. I think you got provided a pretty good RFP. I haven't dealt with one for a long time, Ken, so I'm sure there's no such thing as a perfect one, and I don't, and this was no exception, but I think it was pretty well rounded out. And the bid documents were pretty good. We, again, hadn't done that in a long time, but enjoyed working through that process. And I think what ultimately I was provided, and maybe Mark was too, I think we got a good education of what ALARM has, what ALARM has to offer, and this is maybe my only complaint, I think we got an education that I'm not sure we were, we as independent agents were ever really at the table with a, in a place to make a decision to move to us. So anyway, as this shook out, as Ken put the premiums out there, we competed on what we provided. What we provided was the lowest base bid, $591,162 compared to $603,496. And that didn't have the cyber liability that he, that Ken alluded to in that, so those premiums did change. I firmly believe we brought the strongest insurance carrier to the market. We did bring the largest municipal insurer to the table. As an agency, we passed the agency test, the carrier service test, the staff service test, and I think we as an agency did a good job. What you received, what the city received, I've got four or five items here. I'm going to just hit off some bullet points, and I'm going to come back and explain what my thinking is. I believe you've gotten, you've received an artificially low workers' comp price from ALARM. You've got a politically motivated price on the package from ALARM. No offense, Ken, but I believe you had a virtually predetermined recommendation to stay with ALARM. But you did get a premium savings of $179,322. But with that, you also got the ability to pay up to $50,000 of your own claims, which, as I read through the RFP, the high deductible option that you opted for, the only option I saw in the RFP was for the general liability, high deductible options. So that was a little different. And I wasn't at your subcommittee meetings, but I don't know, did anybody ask ALARM how their premium can, on workers' compensation, can go from $371,000 to $238,000? Assuming, and I can only assume this because I don't have last year's payroll numbers, but assuming payrolls were the same, and I know that the base rates on the city's workers' comp class codes went up 7%. I don't know if anybody asked ALARM that or not, but I think you need to. The reason I say this was a politically motivated package. By offering a lower price to, for a longer-term commitment, in my eyes, is a form of rebating. It's an inducement to purchase that we don't practice as an insurance agency because it's illegal. Point blank, it's illegal. There's a rebating statute on the books, one of them at least is 44-361. So I just, we couldn't, we did not, when the bid documents were asked if we had a lower price for a longer commitment or shorter or longer exit, I had to answer, "No, we can't do it." Onto the predetermined recommendation. We won on, we won the bid on the lowest price of the base bid. But in the notes of the subcommittee, it was advised that Travelers had told Mr. Beers that to expect 10% price increases for this year, and I can't say in perpetuity, but for a couple of years to come. Nobody talked to me about that. Nobody talked to my senior underwriter that did the proposal, Solis Young, and nobody talked to Sue Dahlhauser, the senior marketing of public sector vice, senior vice president of public sector marketing with Travelers. So I don't know where that information came from, but it's not right.
Well, I can.
May I finish? I'm not here to debate. I'm just pointing out my observations. You've talked about dividends for four years. I think Dale or one of you guys asked me about dividends when I was here two years ago. Dividends are overcharge of premium. We offered our price with no dividend option available because we stepped our best foot forward and. forward and we, because of the city of Norfolk's extremely good risk management practices, risk characteristics, we did a best price, low-cost guarantee, not guarantee, but a low, low base price, and we didn't put a dividend on there. The equity thing is equity that you will never get unless LARM liquidates. LARM's not going to liquidate unless they go out of business. If they go out of business, there's not going to be money to liquidate. So the equity position that is held out to be an advantage to the city per a Mr. Green, Joe Green, I think was his name, at the Department of Insurance, he's the one that called this phantom equity. It's not yours to have. The buyer's market. I will be the first to admit that we have been in a buyer's market. Our rates have shrunk for a number of years. Mark's rates have shrunk for a number of years. He and I have arm wrestled over a number of accounts. But, going off memory here, I believe in the, probably the depths or the heights of the soft market, whatever you want to call it, I think the city of Norfolk paid close to $800,000 in insurance premiums. This year, because you stood, picked up the courage to bid this, your account out, you're seeing significant reductions, and somebody needs to ask LARM where they were in this buyer's market. They weren't offering you competitive prices. They were giving you dividends because they were overcharging your premium. In the decision-making process, once August 10th came around, there was a void in information. Ken started emailing questions, so that was a good sign, that we were being vetted. But I just thought, I had hoped, I'd hoped beyond hope, that I wouldn't be standing here tonight, in essence, doing my interview. I had hoped that there was going to be an interview process. And we didn't get a chance to do that. And in reading the minutes of the subcommittee meeting, what I think something is just patently unfair, and no offense to Randy, but there was a LARM board member influencing the decision-making policy for the city of Norfolk's insurance purchase. I will quote, "Gates explained, LARM members are from municipalities. As a board member, Gates stated LARM would not contone bidding an insurance premium and increase the price the following year to cover the low bid to get to business." Further, Gates explained, another thing with LARM is that there aren't any conflict of interests when defending claims, but that may occur with a local company who is representing both clients involved in a claim. That's been an overriding concern for the four years that we've been talking about this process. And I can't speak to Mark's office for sure, but I can't think that it happens more than once a year in my office. And I'll give you an example. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but Shane might be at a meeting in Columbus in a city car, and knock on wood, we hope it doesn't happen, but he could conceivably be backing out of his parking stall in a city car, have the heart attack that the rock and roller had the other night, and drive into or hit an official of the city of Columbus. What's LARM going to do then? They're representing both parties. So in my eyes, that's a talking point that has been held over your head for four years, and it doesn't have a lot of legitimacy. The premium thing, yeah, you saved $179,000 if you opt to take the low deductible, or the high deductible option, and accept the long-term commitment, which, again, I feel is rebating. But we weren't, we, I didn't offer a price on a high deductible for the general liability because that was the only place in the RFP that I could see where it asked for a high deductible for general liability. And it was for a $50,000 per claim, $150,000 aggregate, or $100,000 per claim, a $300,000 aggregate. So I put "not available." Had we really been encouraged to explore different deductibles, I certainly would have, but I wasn't given the opportunity. And then, Ken, getting back to this whole price change, I hope somebody did ask LARM what their renewal premiums would have been, if you wouldn't have bid this. I have a pretty good idea where they'd have been. They'd have been at about $720,000, and, because I know your work comp rates were going to go up, your package rates actually went up, so they might have been closer to $730,000. So what I'm asking for here tonight is that you reject the resolution as presented and accept the low base bid of insurance associates. And if you have to table this for a week, two weeks, it doesn't matter to me, but I'm all for that. Then if you want to know what a high deductible option is from our carrier, give me a week to do that. I can get that number for you. My guess is, and this is purely a guess, I usually shoot my foot, myself in the foot one, I guess, but my guess would be, we might be 3% to 5% lower in overall costs if we, or in our package costs, if we can offer the high deductible option. You're all looking at me like, "Why should we do that when we can get it for lower?" Well, it's because we met or exceeded the RFP in every way. We brought the largest and the most qualified commercial insurer to the table. I believe we had the best coverage. You've got to believe that when you're out selling it. We got the staff to handle the service load, and quite frankly, folks, we didn't rebate the premium to get to that level. And my last item is asking you to stand behind your July 18th memo from Shane Widener to the staff. Support the buy local campaign. Buy the insurance from a local business, keep $600,000 in the local economy. Or with a local business. It doesn't all stay here, trust me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Any questions?
Sure.
One of the issues you talked about, and I know in the subcommittee that I attend, we did, we asked that, was this, you know, I've got a real, not a problem, but I got a problem with RFQ, if you honestly feel that you didn't have the opportunity, or it wasn't stated properly, for you to have the opportunity to offshoot your bid with a lower or a higher deductible. And so, I mean, I...
Ken, I went through it today again, and honestly, I only found it in the general liability section, with those aggregate, the per occurrence and aggregate limit. I didn't see it in any others, and if it's there, maybe it's there, I didn't see it. But I combed through it several times today, so.
Scott, I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Okay.
Kind of like you talked about, you started this four years ago. I've been working on it for 10 years.
Yeah.
I've been complaining that LARM was high and that we weren't getting treated right and blah, blah, blah. Two years ago, it was in the 800,000s. We're 300,000 lower right now if we take the low bid today.
Right.
And I think that's truly amazing. And some of the people on the subcommittee with me, I don't know if it's in the minutes, we talked about that, that how can, it had been coming down, you know, 300,000 in two years. We felt that us bidding it did it too, and if we wouldn't have bid it, we thought we'd be up in the 700s, possibly 800,000 this year. So we truly believe that the bidding process, by having you guys come to the table, did save us some money. I've been saying that for 10 years, and I think we've been a little high, and yeah, they point out that when we get a rebate, then it brings it closer. But you're right, a couple of years ago, we were in a soft market, and we were, from what I talked with you and I talked with Mr. Widener about it, that we thought we were maybe 200,000 to 300,000 high on our premium. So let's do this, and the rest of council supported us here for the last couple of years to get to this point. And I think we're reaping the benefits right now, but I'm curious too, how did we drop 300,000 in a couple of years? And we're very cautious in that subcommittee meeting, to where it says they'll go up in the next year. You know, the little trick in the book, like I said, is come down, and then next year they go back up. There is a clause in there that lets us get out of that if that does happen, and it also says it watches the market. So we've talked about a lot of stuff too, and you mentioned some of them. I just wanted to reiterate those so that the people know. We did meet for hours on this. We did talk about some of the similar things. And I'm just like Shane, if that wasn't fairly presented to you, I think maybe we ought to look at it, but we do have to take that higher deductible and the lowest bid, because we're saving about 300,000 from two years ago. And if we can save more, I say, "Let's see it." So that's just my comment.
And I guess the other thing, I've always been skeptical of the equity because it's something you can't see. We've always heard about it, and I know that there's a customer that's very comparable to the size of Norfolk that they recently signed, that basically is paying the same premium that we are, and they have no equity whatsoever in LARM.
Right.
So in that aspect, I totally agree. I've never really found a great value in our equity, because it's, like you said, the only way we'll get paid is if LARM dissolves, and at that point, they will have no equity to give. Another thing, I want to thank all the people that participated too, because like Dave said, when I got on the council six years ago, Dave was running the gamut for this, and it's, to me, it's quite an accomplishment for this body to finally get to the point that we are at. And I would even go as far to look at some mechanism where we could look at this every six or seven years on odd years, non-election years, that, so it doesn't become an election topic. But I think it's silly if we don't look at something more than every 20 years. But, thank you.
Welcome. And thank you for those comments. I'm going to finish, and again, I'm not debating. On the, on the bidding it every so often, this is the year to move it from LARM. Because, quite frankly, I don't have a lot of motivation to do this three years from now. To be quite honest with you. I don't have a desire to do it a year from now. It takes a lot of work and a lot of time on a lot of people's parts to put this together. And...
I think we'd agree with you on that, Scott. I don't think anybody's ready to...
Yeah, on staff and everybody.
Right.
Except for that longer-term commitment, I think we, I mean, we can't do that. I'm firmly convinced it's rebating, and if you take that off the table, we win the low bid, and we should be getting the business.
Scott, I have a question. What about locking premiums in for three years?
That's, that's not unheard of, but it's not an option.
Scott, thank you. Very well done. Looks like we've got another gentleman that's going to come before us. Mr. Mark?
Yes. Mark Widener with Town and Country Insurance. I don't want to, you know, I just want to echo what Scott said, and I want to just state that Town and Country supports the bid from Travelers and Insurance Associates. I think they're a fine company and a good agency. They're an agency that has members that stay here and play here and pay here. And I think it's time to reward the local. We got the buy local campaign going. I do question the whole thing, and I don't want to repeat this, you know, that stairs step up, Dave, you had that chart years ago, you know, you put together, and then all of a sudden, adding $16 million worth of property and the liability that goes with Veterans Memorial Park and that water park and those sports arenas and stuff, and we can still come down. I hope those of us that didn't vote, I appreciate and I thank you guys, you know, pass like even Carl Reader and the crew. I thank you guys and the staff that stepped up and did a lot of work, Gary and Shane, and Ken did a lot of work. I think it paid, I mean, obviously, it paid off. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate you guys doing that, and I hope the guys who voted against it can see that it is a good thing. And I do agree with you, I think we do need to do this, not every 20 years, not every 10, not every, you know, every three to five, I think is a good thing. So, but I just wanted to, I don't want to, I thought Scott pointed out everything that I wanted to say, just wanted to step up and say that we do support their bid and hope you consider that, so.
LARM, seeing you're here, I should give you opportunity.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Andrews. I'm with LARM. I'm a new marketing manager, so I'm new on the block. I've only been with LARM about two months. I do come from the other side of the table, though. I have 30 years' experience in the commercial insurance industry. And I took this position because I felt that LARM had a lot of good things to give. The only two things that I would say, that I would say as far as promoting local, I think LARM is local. I think we live here, we are in the state of Nebraska, Travelers is not. The money that is pooled comes back to all of the municipalities. I'm sorry, my voice, I wasn't expecting on speaking. So all the money that is pooled comes back directly to the municipalities. So alls we do is municipalities. I think that we've done a great job servicing the account and working with Ken Barris on the RFP. And I think the other thing that is really important is that the League of Nebraska Municipalities has done a lot of things and brings a lot of good things to the municipalities, and we are an arm of the League. And the only thing I would say with respect to our premium, I wouldn't know, I couldn't answer, you know, what happened three years ago. If you want some, you know, further information on that, I could look that up, but it's not something I looked into. There was a change in your mod factor on your work comp, which brought your work comp down pretty dramatically, I think. I don't have the, I didn't bring the information with me, but...
Right. There was a million-dollar claim that came off there.
Right.
I think there was another, rather substantial claim.
So there was two substantial claims, and I don't know if you understand how the mod works, but that is why the work comp is so dramatically lower, is that when you pay a claim out over a three-year period, that claim, you get a multiplier put on top of the 1-0 that is standard in the industry. So you had a two, one very substantial claim fall off and one fairly significant claim fall off. That's why there's such a huge difference. It wasn't any pricing or anything like that, that we were out there trying to do anything on. That's just, that's the reality of it. So that's all I have to say. It's been great working with Ken, and, you know, I think that LARM has done a good job for the municipality, paid claims, handled things well. You've got our local loss control guy, Steve Hecker, is a member of your community. He works out of Norfolk for us, and I think he's done a great job and brings a lot to the table for you. So that's all I have to say.
I appreciate you coming forward. Thanks for doing so. Ken?
Can I speak?
You bet.
Yeah, I don't agree with every comment that Scott has made. He talked about the 10%. I was the person who threw out the 10%, based, this is the increase of Travelers.
Right.
And I worked with an agent in the Detroit area that despite the major penetration of pools in Detroit and Michigan, you know, he works with a lot of municipalities, and he told him, he told me that Travelers had indicated that they were looking for 10% nationally. Additionally, my largest client, which happens to be a pool that I consult for, we took an 8% hit from Travelers this year after some arm wrestling with them. And Travelers in Michigan writes at least three out of four of the K through 12 pools. So there was plenty of leverage, and, you know, they originally tried to get more than eight, probably 10 or 12. So, I mean, that's my experience with Travelers. As far as the phantom equity, I did mention that the city really couldn't expect to receive all the equity back. Right now, the equity, the last time that I've seen it with LARM is like $7.7 million. Rule of thumb is, is that you want to maintain your equity in a pool at least 10 times, you know, what your largest per occurrence retention is, which is, would make that $5 million. So, I mean, I can't speak for LARM... So, I mean, I can't speak for LARM as far as what the precise potential for future equity is, but I know that you've got $209,000 during the past five years. So, to characterize that as phantom equity is phantom logic. As far as the deductible is concerned, noted in a memo from Scott saying, "Do we really need low deductibles?" And, you know, he went out on his own and where is the specification called for 5,000 property deductible? He plugged his in at 10. Where law enforcement was 2,500 and 5,000, it was around 15,000. Similar with public officials liability. Asked for a lower, got a higher. On the next page, on the workers' compensation, he's indicating that, and that's where we specifically asked for it, that Travelers didn't have time to do all the analysis that was necessary for this type of deductible and he's talking like it's a process similar to self-insurance, which it's not. So, I mean, they had the specifications for, what, six or seven weeks, couldn't do it. Now, he's gonna do it next few days. One pattern that I seem to run into is that get the complaints after the process is over rather than during the process when some action can be taken. I mean, I think that we stated in the specifications that we were agreeable to other alternatives that...
Shane, were you part of that subcommittee? I, okay. And do you remember that it was brought up and read to us? Do you remember that?
Yeah, it was brought up that we would, when we were talking about the RFP and we were talking about if we, if LARM's going to come back with lower deductibles or higher deductibles, I'm sorry, higher deductibles, if that's going to change their price, is that specified and put out there in front of the other bidders?
Right.
And I remember we've said that.
Right.
You know, point blank and that's where I want to make sure that this was, if we're voting on something tonight.
Yep.
And it's not apples to apples, I have a hard time voting on it because that's what we went out to do, was get apples to apples. So, if this one that's presented in front of us tonight for higher deductible, the low number at 534, 351, 180 days, or, I'm sorry, for three years, if that is honest, if that's what, you know, everybody was putting in front of us, you know, that's something we can vote on, but I don't, I don't know, I have a hard time, I mean, I have a hard time sitting there if it wasn't out there. And I'm just saying, and we can go back into this, but if it, on the RFP, if that was different anyway than what we're reading tonight, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, I get involved in the bids too and then I can understand where that would be, like all of a sudden you got here and you feel like, oh wait, they threw a curveball at me last minute and I'm getting, now I'm here in front of everybody and it's different.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, you actually read that to us, did you not?
There's the language that I think Ken was talking about that's in the, this is in the...
Mine the way here.
...requirements and instructions for bidding, section one, and then the statement of purpose. And talks about, this paragraph here, it talks about acceptance or retention of deductibles compatible with this financial screen. And I would also consider a plan which deviates from options listed in the specifications that appears to offer overall.
Thank you. If it appears to offer overall cost benefits from the city, and I think that's kinda what Ken was getting at in Scott's proposal, that deviated from the specifications in that it offered higher deductibles, not $25,000 deductibles, but 10,000 where we'd asked for five. We didn't throw that out, relying on this language in here where we would consider other deductibles that deviated from what was sent out in the specs. And if I got that wrong, Ken, please let me know.
No, that's correct. I mean, we, we expected that we would get some variation in deductibles, didn't get as much as we anticipated. On the other hand, there were certain coverage that we didn't get specifically what we asked for. This was a relatively complex set of specifications. We asked for a lot of stuff, we thought it was in the city's best interest to get as much as we could get on their behalf. I think we had about 125 items on our proposal forms, yes, no, yes, no. No participant met every one of these and for Scott to say that he met and exceeded the specifications, that's a little bit of a reach.
Well, and, you know, I think at this point, are you satisfied with the response here, Shane? I know where you're coming from and I get it and I just want you to be comfortable in the fact that what was provided us as well that morning.
I wouldn't necessarily, I feel, I feel like...
This is tough.
Yeah, well, I feel like right now, we're sitting on a very good number and I'm proud of everybody that's here and I can't thank these guys sitting out here enough for going through the work they did and the council members who have been working on this way before I was here and even city staff for all the hard work you put in. And again, I'm not here trying to bash anybody, I'm just saying, if there was something that is different, if you're providing a bid for A and you, we show up tonight and vote on B, that's where I'm kind of, you know, I guess I'm kinda lost. So, I mean, help me out here, guys. I mean, you're in the subcommittee meetings with...
My question, I wasn't on the subcommittee, but my question would be, if we did table this till the next meeting, would we, would a lapse in our coverage occur? I mean, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think...
Councilman, I'm not sure if I am appreciating what you're saying. I mean, it's very clear, at least in my mind, it's very clear what's stated there in the statement of purpose as far as the options that the vendors were able to employ. LARM chose to employ those options, the other vendors did not. Now, as stated by Ken, Scott and his company did put in different numbers in those deductibles other than what we were asking for. You know, we could have a long conversation about the goodness of low deductibles versus the higher deductible, the deductibles we're considering.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with them at all. My guess, my, sorry, my thing is, that paragraph to me, it's like if I'm doing a bid and I get an offer, I offer options in a bid that, to get a lower number and I leave out a kitchen because I feel like I could leave the kitchen out, it would help my bid. That's, that's what that paragraph is, help me.
I just want to make a comment. When you're building a house and you want a kitchen, a bathroom and a bedroom, you can't, insurance isn't like that, okay?
I understand. I'm just going off of that paragraph.
And the hardest part about insurance is, is every carrier, whether it's LARM, Travelers, employers, Cornhusker, has these things that they throw in and you're gonna get, you cannot, I don't care how hard you try. I've been in this industry 30 years. You are not gonna compare apples to apples. And when LARM, when LARM chose to put in a bid of a different deductible and we did it solely for the purpose of, it was a cost savings effort by LARM because we felt that that's what the city of Norfolk was looking for. And the higher deductible option, that is the paragraph by which we decided to throw it in. There are things in the RFP that LARM didn't quote and I am sure there are things that the other carriers didn't quote because we don't have that capability of having an apple and an apple and it being the same. And so, I totally understand where you're coming from, but having been in the industry and done, I can't even tell you how many RFPs I have done in my 30 years. You cannot make an apples-to-apples comparison. You can get as close as you can and you can work as hard as you can to make as solid a comparison as you can. We only put in the bid with the higher deductible option. It was a choice that LARM made thinking that because of the cost savings that we were able to offer by that, the premium would look enticing and that's the truth. We didn't, and it was a last second deal that we did that. At the very last minute, I said, hey, I actually, it was our underwriter, I think, said, "Why don't we go ahead and do the 2550, submit it, see what happens? This cost savings actuarially works out, it looks good." So, I understand where you're coming from, I really do. But with insurance, it's not like getting specs for a house where everything's exact and you can have one builder build the exact same house. It just, it just doesn't happen. So, that's all I have to say. I understand your frustration though.
Well, I, no, you're right. You can get specs that say the exact same for a house, but when you have a paragraph like that, that says, I should, kitchen's a bad example. Vinyl siding versus hardboard siding, there, it's a little bit easier, but, no, and I do, and I'm not here to say that anything was sleight of hand here. That's not what I'm trying to say, I'm just saying, that to me is a little bit confusing and I think we were trying to make sure this was, but, and maybe I'm, you know, I'm here to listen, so.
What, I have a, I have a question. Scott, did you want to say something before I ask this question?
All right, guys, and I'm all for you, Scott.
Get out of this debate here.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing.
Thanks.
Short.
Yep.
The deductible issue is a fundamental difference in what our proposal was. We had minimum deductibles and I believe the context of my question to Ken was, do we have to provide these, the low deductibles in the RFP basically because we couldn't? We couldn't match up a $5,000 property deductible with a $90 million statement of values. Our police professional had a $15,000 deductible minimum. So, the rating process, the change of that deductible to a 25,000 per occurrence, $50,000 aggregate deductible is fundamentally a different way of rating a policy. Now, maybe it doesn't make any difference, I'm not so tuned up on that as I am the extension of the three-year commitment.
Okay, let me ask there, I would like a little clarification myself. I guess as we sit here and talk about the fact that the last thing we want to do is rebid this again in a year or two or three. And I don't understand a whole lot about insurance, you know that. But, as I look at the ability for the pooling of municipalities, to know that we are committed, would that not be beneficial to them to be able to foresee the future somewhat, to be able to say to us that if we can count on you being a part of? I don't know that I see that so much as enticing, Scott, as I just see it ability of the pool to be able to assist. And that's just, you know, I sit back and, you and I had a conversation and I told you that one of the things that's most difficult is when you have somebody that provides for you, you're our insurance person in our business and certainly one of the finest. But, again, I go back to, you know, we know we can count on you, we know you're there and we don't, I just want this to be all about the buy-local as much as what is the best thing for this city of Norfolk as we make this decision. And it's a tough one. I will tell all of you that this is not easy because myself personally, I don't know a whole lot about insurance, but I do know that I can count on, or I'm one of those that wants to look at what it is that's served us well. So, while I understand the dollars in the past, it's the past and we're right here where we are now, folks. And I just want to see us go forward in a positive mode here to know that all the efforts that have been put in by everybody here pay dividends to us. So, with all respect, Scott, like I say, you've done an excellent job in being very respectful this evening as well. And I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm just saying, I don't like to think of it as enticement as much as the reality of to know that it's very doubtful, I don't think there's anyone in that subcommittee that wants to see us go through this again and have the same discussion for whether it's three years, five years, seven, whatever the magic number is. So, knowing that and assuring us as we had that conversation that morning in that if it got to be to the point where if an increase was above what the market value was doing or market rate or whatever, then certainly we would be able to pull back from that. So, I just, I make that clarification in that statement as that was certainly part of the conversation that we had.
And that's absolutely right, Mayor. We have that provision and we are able to do that. And one thing I want you to keep in mind, Mayor and Council, is the fact that we are a member of LARM, sure, is it a local, is it, does it germane or does it coincide with the buy-local campaign? I can make a strong argument that it absolutely does. I mean, you are a pool, you're part of that pool, he is on the board of directors, he answers through me to you who answer to the community. I don't know if there's any more of a direct connect to the community than having a representation on the, directly on the board. And your, the money that you provide to the pool goes to that pool. It doesn't go across the United States to the east coast or west coast, it goes to the pool, except for the amount that goes to reinsurance, just like the commercial reinsurance goes to their reinsurance. So, you know, when you look at that, you know, it's fairly significant, I think. And the fact of the matter is, you know, I have a strong insurance agent too, happens to be in this room. I don't question him, he provides a good service for me, so I don't question that. LARM has treated us fairly as a municipality in my mind for a long time. There might be arguments against that and we can have those arguments, but they have treated us fairly. We are a founding member of that organization and we are with like sisters, municipal sisters in that pool. There isn't any private businesses in there, there isn't any private individuals in there, they're all municipalities, every one of them, that have like claims, like situations, like safety concerns that the city of Norfolk does. So, when we compare our claims to theirs, we can, and discuss our claims with LARM, they understand it purely. They understand it purely from a municipal's perspective, as do we as a community. So, we can talk about claims very consistently and they understand what to expect from us and we understand what to expect from them. And that is a relationship that's strong, you know? So, when you have a number in front of you that's responsive to the budget, that takes in count the citizens' demand from you folks, that you are frugal and you look at the budget, you have a responsive bid from LARM, you have a responsive bid from Travelers, you have a responsive bid from, from a Cornhusker. They all did a wonderful job. This process has been a very, very good thing for this community, for this staff and I hope for elected officials. You know, it has been. We've learned a lot about our own insurance, that, you know, it was time to look at it. I agree with that. You know, I don't know what the magic look-back time is, is it three years, is it five years, is it 10 years? I don't know what that magic is, but I do know this, based on this experience, there is a magic look-back time. And I think that's dependent on what the mayor and council of the future feel about their insurance and about LARM or about Travelers or about Cornhusker or whatever insurance company we have. I think there's a magic look-back time on all of those things. So, I want you to consider that relationship issue because it's important, it's very important. The league of municipalities and our relationship with LARM is important. It doesn't just, you know, I think we could establish a fine relationship in time with a Travelers or a Cornhusker or any of the privates, I think are, I think we could establish that because we all have good intentions, we have no malintentions. But right now, we have a great relationship with this vendor and we always have and that's important. I just, I put those two cents in there because, you know, when I talk about buy-local, I meant that. I meant that memo to my staff and they've embraced it. And we're doing that through any one of these proposals we would embrace, in my mind. So, I want to keep that in mind. And another thing I wanted to talk about just a little bit is, is the fact that, that again, Randy is there, he's at the board meetings. When those bids were submitted, you can see by the array of bids that you got that there was no undercutting of bids, there was no buying the business. I mean, it was very competitive. I mean, the high bid of the three was higher than what we paid last year. So, you can't tell me that we bid, we bought the business because we're all competitive here. LARM was competitive and Town and Country was competitive and so was Insurance Associates. So, that didn't happen. I mean, that just didn't happen. And I expect it won't happen in the future either as we go through this process again or in the second or third or fourth years as we look at premium increases. You know, I... You know, I think the LARM is going to have to understand and give enough information to their board members so they can answer the questions to their elected officials, just like you guys have asked over the last four years. And I think they're very much prepared to do that. And he's right there. He's at the meetings, every time they have a meeting, and that's important. So I'll just say that, I just want you to keep in mind, it isn't all about the low bid.
And I just wanted to clarify my point about looking at this in the future on some type of a timetable. And my reasoning for that is, because as we found in this process, it took us three years to get to this point. If my term's four years, and I come on the first year, and there's not some kind of a trigger mechanism to make this happen, I'm making that decision my last year of my term, and that is going to reflect on the person that takes my place. That's why I think that it would be a responsible thing for this body in the future to look at having some kind of mechanism, for example, six years from next year, that we reexamine where we're at and where we're going, because it's very time-consuming. But when this started, some of these people's term is almost over, and we're to that point, and they're handing that baton to somebody else. So that decision is going to be passed on to someone else, irregardless of when we start that mechanism. That's my thought process in having some type of a table to help those folks in the future. That's a luxury that we didn't have.
Understood.
And that's a point well made. I agree.
I have a question. I'm not exactly sure, Ken, if I should ask this question to you or to Scott, but is the language in, that was in the RFP, is the language in that paragraph that was shown up on the screen, is that, is that standard language for this type of an RFP?
I use it pretty frequently. So I would say it's common.
Second question I would have is, it was my understanding, the equity that the city of Norfolk has in LARM, a couple of years ago, you could certainly see where some of that dividend was going to come from. We do have an equity position there that's being argued somewhat seemingly. And I don't know if you can answer this question, or Randy, if it would be best answered by you, but at what, at what point would the equity then become valuable to the city? Is it in a strong market where we're anticipating a return on that equity in a 2% or 3% a year, or 4% a year if the market's tight? Could you, and could you answer whether we've ever seen any money come back towards the city in the form of a return on that equity that wasn't tied to just a dividend for being in LARM?
There's two ways you get your money back out of that equity. One's a dividend, and LARM had accumulated surplus, or as Scott said, they had premiums higher than they needed to be when you went back and looked at the losses, and you're kind of taking a guess when you look at those losses. And LARM's got a relatively small pool compared to Travelers, so the smaller the pool you got, the more variability you're going to have in that. But that was good experience in the...
It's all right.
Scoot over closer.
There was good experience in the pool in some of those years, and we'd build up, pool built up equity, and a good chunk of that equity belonged to the city of Norfolk. And so they declared some dividends, and we got two years of dividends in the $100,000, $120,000 range. That's one way of getting equity back.
One way that is not available to us now.
The, when J.I. came on board, they suggested that LARM, in order to be competitive, would try and fine-tune those rates, push them down a little lower, and instead of accumulating equity that would then be distributed as a dividend, and my understanding is a lot of pools like to price things that way, say, won't get in trouble if they have, instead of particularly good years like we had, a string of particularly bad years, they've got a little cushion there, and then they just don't declare the equity. They give it back on the backside. J.I. suggested that we try and get more aggressive in our pricing so we could be competitive, and LARM could be competitive when they're bidding with the Scott Williams and Mark Wydeners of the world, that they try and take that cushion out of there, meaning we probably wouldn't be paying dividends in the future. Not ruling that out completely if we have some really good years, but probably wouldn't be paying them in the future. But that equity is supposed to be in there, and if you've got $500,000 of equity when they're doing the underwriting calculation, you're supposed to get an underwriting credit based on the interest that could be earned on that equity. Right now, that's almost nothing. So now we could have tens of millions of dollars of equity in there, and we're still going to get almost nothing based on that formula, because 0% of anything's zero. And interest rates are pretty close to zero, not quite there, but pretty close to us. We're not going to get any advantage out of our equity this year because of the way interest rates are, or very little advantage out of our equity because of the way interest rates are. But if interest rates turn around and they're able to start investing those funds and earning, I remember in the good old days, back in the early '80s when I started with the city, we were getting double-digit interest rates on short-term money, you know, 18%, 20% interest rates. In those kind of markets, that equity would be very valuable. And that's the other way that the city can get back its equity, is a little piece at a time that will go on forever, as long as that equity remains there in the underwriting formulas. Right now, it's not worth the hell it means, because interest rates are so low. You know, a few years from now, maybe it will be.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you. Randy, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Randy, also, will you explain to the Mayor and Council the lid levy benefits sticking with LARM?
Simply. Simply.
I'll be brief. The city, well, all cities in the state, most governmental subdivisions in the state, render lid levy constraints, you can only raise your revenues X percentage. We've got a cushion now, it's in these budget documents I have somewhere on the computer here, of like a million and a half or so of, I think it's right around a million and a half, that we could have extra restricted revenues and would still be all right under the lid. If you're part of an interlocal agreement, revenues that are raised that go to fund services under an interlocal agreement, and LARM's a great example of that, all these cities that belong to LARM entered into an interlocal agreement, they're going to pool their resources and pool their risk, and that's how they're going to cover their insurance quote-unquote needs. So because of that, that $500,000 or $600,000 that we're going to pay LARM, the revenue for that, that we raise for that comes off of the lid calculations. We don't need that this year, we'd still be fine without that. But those long-term financial plan predictions that we do that show where we're looking at 10 years down the road, and because of what's happening with our sales tax, well, this year, the sales tax looks good, but what's been in general happening with our sales tax since about 2000, where it's been growing at a very low rate, in some years actually negative, and that's our, by far and away, our biggest general fund revenue source, that says we're going to have to increase some other revenues, and if we keep having the same types of expenditure pressure that is in that formula, we're looking at probably about the third year down the road, we'd start having lid problems according to the formula that's in that long-term financial plan. And it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse until you're millions of dollars in the hole. We're pretty conservative in that long-term financial plan, like we are with our budgets, so I don't think that'll really happen three years from now that we'll have lid problems. But it could definitely happen seven, eight, nine, 10 years from now, that we could have lid problems. So that's an advantage that we don't need now, we may need sometime in the future that we can take that revenue that we're paying towards the interlocal agreement, in this case, League Association Risk Management Pooling Agreement, and take that outside of the lid.
So it's really lid on the levy?
It's a, there's also levy limits.
Oh, never mind, never mind. You guys probably understand this much better than I do, but I believe you. Clint, did you want to add something?
I wanted to, I wanted to address just two things. I'm not sure that everybody clamored to go see what 44-361 said when Scott mentioned it, okay?
I had a hard time finding it.
44-361 is in a section of the statutes, and I didn't have all that much time to look at it. But that's in a section of the statutes that applies to insurance companies, it doesn't apply to Intergovernmental Risk Management Act agencies.
I called the Department of Insurance today and specifically asked them that, and they said that anyone in the state of Nebraska that's involved with insurance, including pools, are regulated by that statute.
Well, 44-361 doesn't say that. 44-361 says, no insurance company by itself. So I'm not exactly sure what it says, but what I do know is that 44-361 has not been amended since the last time it was amended, and I don't know what they changed, in 1972, but the last time it was amended was in 1972. At that point in time, Intergovernmental Risk Management Act, which made possible the pools, didn't exist. That didn't exist until 1987. So there may be some disconnect there, I'm not, I'm not sure. That was one thing. The second thing is, when you look at what Randy, it used to be there, what Randy had up there in regard to that, I was just messing around here, trying to stay engaged, and I was looking at the specs that were out there, the RFP process. And if you look at, if you went through and looked at the fine thing and talked about deductibles, I marked up about, I don't know, 12 or 14 different places in there where it talked about those various deductibles. So there are, there's lots of things in there. I did not, haven't looked at it to debate what exactly it means, but there are lots of points in there with the various coverages where it talks about alternative deductibles other than this statement of purpose in item B, if you go along and search it. I think that's, that's true, Ken, I don't know, I marked up here and put it about 12, but there was a number of places where that was, where that was in place, and very, very many in the various covers. But that's it, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. That being said, there's some of you that, you have any comments or any further? I always look at you, Councilman Lang, because sometimes you give me that look like, don't go too quickly on me, so I want to give you opportunity if there's...
I guess through the process, I mean, it's been a long process, and it's not something that any of us, either in the business world or in municipal world, enjoy doing on a real long time, or on a very short timeframe, short turnaround timeframe that way. So I did sit on the Subcommittee, and a lot of these things were debated, I was at all of the Subcommittee meetings that way, and where they were discussed, along with the discussions for the RFP. And I think, you know, you see the numbers that pop out there, and right away, the questions are, you know, okay, there was 200,000, or this number floats around from 200 to 300, and there's, there are definite explanations for, you know, along with the dividends that were paid on out, of why we were at those numbers. It is a good process that we went through. I mean, you hate to do it, but, and it was an expensive process, not only in dollars, but also in staff time, and just members from, from the competing companies and that, everybody put a lot of time into this thing. So you're not real happy if you aren't selected that way, but again, it's one of those things that we in the business world, you know, you end up doing these things, you don't probably do them 365 days a year, but you do do a bid process quite often, as Shane will be able to attest to, and Pat will be able to attest to, and, you know, it's just something that we do. So with that being said, I think, I would hate to see this thing tabled, I don't think tabling is really going to bring us any further to a decision one way or another that way. I think we bring it forward, and when the discussion's all been done, we vote on it and see where it stands at. So I think, again, we can't go wrong with, I would say, any one of the two or three that were out there, we wouldn't go wrong with any one of them, being the insurer for the city for the next three to five years.
Okay, all right.
I'd just like to make a comment or two, and that is, I certainly want to thank all the vendors for the work that they put into it in submitting their proposals for the insurance for the city of Norfolk. Also, I want to thank Mr. Burris for his participation. I think the city of Norfolk, or this council, has done everything in its power to level the field to the best of their ability. I think that we have done that, and I think that the proposals have been submitted fairly and accurately and honestly. I think the Subcommittee has taken an opportunity to review these proposals on two different occasions, and they've come up with a recommendation. And I think that it behooves this council to adhere to the recommendation and approve the recommendation presented by the Subcommittee.
All right, lots of discussion. With that, though, can we move forward with consideration of Resolution Number 2012-34 regarding cities' participation in the League Association of Risk Management?
I'll introduce Resolution 2012-34.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. I think we've had plenty of discussion. I'm going to ask that you please vote.
All Councilmembers. Councilmembers voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2012-34 is adopted.
Again, Scott, Mark, and family, thanks for being here. I know it's been a process. Very well done, gentlemen, I appreciate that as well. Moving forward under public hearing, first is a public hearing to review the city of Norfolk 2012, 2013 municipal budget. I will open the hearing. Oh, yeah, I'm going to do both of them at the same time here, guys, if I can, as well the proprietary budget, the water sewer and solid waste, we're going to do that all together. And we'll let Randy probably speak slightly to these, because certainly there's been a lot of budget talk already through the earlier meetings as well, so Randy, it's yours.
Yes, Your Honor. The budget covers on the screen now, I thought that was a nice cover to put on this year's budget, because that represents our biggest project last year, and the council's number one priority, the $16.4 million rec. project, and that's picture of AquaVenture, of course. That is winding its way down, and only $310,000 budgeted next year for that. And that's what was driving some of the large budgets you've been seeing these last three years. We've had three years of larger budgets by far than we've had before, and that's what this blue line is, is the total city budget. The red line is a portion that's capital of that. As you can see, these red lines are higher than they have been in the past, which has made these lines higher than they have been in the past. And the $16.4 million rec. project was a very big chunk of that. Our current budget still has, as you can see there with the red line that's up at the top, significant capital outlay, there's about $19.5 million of capital outlay in this budget. Biggest chunk of that, over half of it being in the city's utility funds, we have substantial capital outlay in both the water and the sewer fund, that I'll talk about in detail a little later on. For instance, there's a $3.7 million in the water fund for a water transmission main into town from the west water treatment plant. And the sewer fund also has some large mains, including a $1.7 million for the Southwest Interceptor, and $1.4 million to reconstruct the mains that were damaged by the flooding. Interceptor, and $1.4 million to reconstruct the mains that were damaged by the flooding. This is the slide that seems to tell the story that really gets most people's attentions, what is happening with the city's property tax. The property tax that the city levies on property citywide is these numbers here. The council also levies the vehicle parking district property tax, and there's a separate resolution that talks about that later in a separate hearing. But that only applies to downtown property. So this is the third year in a row, if you exclude that vehicle parking district levy, which they levy the maximum of 35 cents allowed by law, that we've had a levy rate that has, property tax levy that has not changed. And our evaluations have been going up a little bit during that period of time, so levy rates have actually been going down a little bit. And you could almost go back four years, because this $400,000 increase here was a voter-approved increase for the economic development fund. So we've had four years of consistent property taxes. And that's keeping us as one of the lowest cities in the state. This is a comparison of all the first-class city levy rates in the state. Norfolk's is a blue levy rate there. And this assumes everybody else's levy rates will remain unchanged, as ours is essentially doing. We had a 0.5% increase in our assessed valuation this year, so since we're leaving our property taxes the same, we're going to have a 0.5 or a half of 1% decrease in our levy rate. But for all intents and purposes, nobody's going to realize that when they look at their property tax bullets, like a buck on a $100,000 home, that the city's share of the property tax would go down. If everybody's levy rate stayed the same, we'd still be fourth lowest, and well below what most first-class cities are levying for taxes in the state. This levy shows that that probably isn't going to make a whole lot of difference on somebody's property tax bill. This is our share of the property taxes levied against property and city limits. That's about 10%. Schools is this big red piece. This is the county, and everybody else is also about 10%. So we're a very small piece of the total levy rate that is on your homes in Norfolk. So what we do affects it a little bit, but it doesn't affect it a whole lot, which I think we sometimes get blamed for increases other subdivisions the government have had. And people, for some reason, seems to think the city is to blame for the biggest part of their property tax, and we are not. We're a small slice of that total property tax pie. There is, however, pressure on our property tax. I mentioned it a little bit earlier tonight when I was talking about something else. And that's because the big chunk of our general fund revenue, and this is just a pie chart of where our general fund revenues come from, the big chunk, this red here, is sales tax. It's 40%, well over 40% of the general fund revenue. So as sales tax goes, so goes our budget, more or less. MPPD lease revenue is another huge chunk of the pie. It's over a fourth of the general fund revenues in and of itself. And then when you get down to property tax, even though it's our third-largest revenue source, it's getting down to another small piece of the pie, about like that 10% piece of the pie you were seeing earlier. Actually, it's about 8% of our total general fund revenues. But it is a revenue source that we have the most easy direct control over. So if you've got this piece of the pie, or this piece of the pie that aren't growing to keep up with your expenditure growth, that puts pressure on this piece of the pie, or the property tax piece of the pie. But luckily, this last year, and this is just simply the chart that goes in the works in progress that you see every month with all the dollars removed off the top, but this is a month-by-month comparison for the last six years of what's happened with our sales tax, with the purple bars being 2012. As you can see, every one of those purple bars is above the red bar for 2011. So we've had consistent sales tax growth, and you'll see some of these purple bars are way above the red bars. We've got a number of months with double-digit percentage increases. So that was a welcome relief when we're putting the budget together this year, having sales tax growing like that. It made the budget easier, much easier to put together than those years back here where you see it has been really flat, and actually months where it's been declining in prior The other large general fund revenue sources I'd mentioned is Nebraska Public Power District lease revenue. The city of Norfolk owns the electrical distribution system and leases it to Nebraska Public Power District, and that lease revenue makes up a quarter of our general fund budget. And this has been pretty flat, this is the last 10 years of history. And it's been pretty flat in the first part of those 10 years. Doesn't look like it because of what happened right here, but that was a 2% increase we had because of the power of the partnership. If you take that into account, these would all be looking pretty flat through here. And then, starting in, I think it was around 2008, there was a series of rate increases Nebraska Public Power District had, like 5% to 10% a year, and that started bumping these up, which nobody likes to see their electric bill go up, but it does make the revenue side of our budget look nicer when Nebraska Public Power District is increasing their rates, and that's been another factor in our general fund budget. What you're seeing back here that was holding these so flat, back in the, oh, 10 years ago, 15 years or so ago, a lot of the industries started buying, started basically minding away the part of the system that the city owned that connect to the industry, to MPPD's transmission line. They bought that little distribution chunk, so they weren't on the city-owned system anymore. And by not being on the city-owned system, they didn't have to pay the 10% or 12% lease payment that was factored into their electric bills. So that was holding these pretty flat back in this area here. But they've been bumping up nicely, and we don't expect to see those continue bumping up that nicely going forward. I think they'll be starting to moderate. For instance, this year only has a 4% increase planned in it for January 1 of 2013. We're seeing 6.5% increases back in here, and I think a 10% increase. So I think those will be starting to moderate, and we'll be starting to see those rates more in line with what's happening with inflation. This is just an example, a chart showing by major category of expenditures what's happened with our total budget. As you can see, our total budget expenditures are down 5.7%, going from $73 million last year to $69 million this year. Personnel costs are up 5.4%, or a little under $1 million. There's a number of reasons for that. One is the 2.6% cost of living adjustment that's built into this budget, and that was calculated simply by going back and looking at the time we put out the budget memo, what had happened to the CPI in the last 12 months. I think it was up 2.66%, and we'd rounded it down to 2.6. So that's part of that. We also have the normal merit pay increases, group health insurance premiums, group health shows as a personnel cost, and those are up 8% this year, both city and employer. And then we had a new fund for the first time this year, the Economic Development Operating Fund, and that's where Courtney and Candace's wages are budgeted. So that's about $188,000 of that personnel increase is because of that. That's total personnel costs, not just wages. And there's also a $190,000 increase in wages in the rec division. We're going to have a full year of operations of the pool next year, and then we also added some additional lifeguards. There's a park caretaker position added to assist with the new rec facilities. And in the street division, there was three higher-paid personnel that were not budgeted this year. The street director retired, and the street supervisor retired, and then an equipment operator was transferred over to the water division. And that allowed us to, for the same personnel dollars essentially, add four street maintenance workers, or as I think Gary Miller said, get more boots on the ground. There were several promotions and reclassifications in the fire division, which resulted in eliminating the fire prevention officer position. You sort all these things out, the net result was an increase in three full-time equivalent employees. The two that I mentioned in economic development, which previously, that was a function of the Oakhorn Valley Economic Development Council, now the city, and then the net effect of those other positions that were added and subtracted. Operational maintenance, as you can see, increases about a million and a half, or 16%. There'll be 840 economic development fund accounts for $405,000 of that. This is our third year now with that fund, as you can see from that property tax chart I showed earlier. And we have not spent any of those funds yet. A plan on spending the premier senior marketing money, we're getting that money out the door yet this fiscal year, but there's been a balance building in that fund, and we're budgeting to spend it all. So if we've got projects coming along, we've got the budget available to do that. So that's what's resulting in that increase. There's a $4,000 increase in the CDBG fund operations, and that's a second story rental rehab grant for downtown. The remaining O&amp;M increase is primarily due to $625,000 budgeted in the water fund to paint a couple of large water tanks. It always amazes me how much it costs to paint water tanks. And remember, probably 20-some years ago, I was sitting here, and it was a huge number to paint a water tank, and I'm still shocked over time I see those numbers. But I guess it's a tough job. Capital expenditures decrease 9.9 million, or 34%. I guess part of that's due to that cover that I showed on the budget, we've spent almost all of that $16.4 million of rec bond proceeds, only $310,000 of that's rebudgeted. We had $9.2 million in the budget last year for the second year of expending expenditure of those bond proceeds. The other large capital budget in the capital project fund are $540,000 for various police equipment and software upgrades, including E911 CAD, records and mobile data consoles, $535,600 for council priority projects that is yet unidentified, $400,000 for accounting software, $280,000 for street division equipment, including a motor patrol, loader and dump truck, and $270,000 for Tahoe Trail Extensions. And there's $150,000 in there for phone equipment for all the divisions. CHAF capital outlay decreases. Nebraska Department of Roads changed the way they're doing grant funding, federal grant funding this year. Is to be that, get the federal grant money, they give it to us, and we write a check to the contractor. That means it's got to go through our accounting system, it becomes part of our budget. Going forward, they're not going to do that anymore. They're going to write the checks to contractors themselves. So we're not seeing those dollars flowing through the CHAF fund anymore, that Surface Transportation Program money, I believe is a thing of the past that we'll see going through our budget. And there was about $2 million of capital outlay last year that was related to that type of program. Those kind of things won't be shown in our budget anymore. But we do have large capital items budgeted in CHAF. There's about $1.25 million for street maintenance contract work, $920,000 for northeast industrial highway phase three, $115,000 for Highway 35 and Victory Road, $469,000 for east Highway 35, and $4,6,500 for northeast industrial highway phase one. And then there's, as I mentioned earlier, significant capital outlay in the enterprise funds, but I'll discuss that in more detail later. Debt service, as you can see, decreases about a half million dollars, or 17%. The biggest chunk of that's in the sewer fund, and that was simply related to a refunding we did in 1011. When we did that refunding, there was substantial revenue already accumulated in the revenue bond accounts for those bonds. We put aside a sixth every month of the upcoming interest payment, and a 12th of the upcoming principal payments. When you refund those issues, normally you take those monies and use them to pay off the bonds, and we also threw a little bit of cash into that. So there was, and this was happening late enough in the year, we knew we were going to be doing this at the time of preparing the 1112 budget. So those monies that normally went and got spent until 1112, got spent back in 1011 when we did the refunding, and made the 1112 budget for debt service and sewer fund artificially low, you might say. Now it's just reverting back up to where it should be. So that's just kind of an anomaly related to a refunding is what's caused that to change. Transfers increased $152,000. The biggest chunk of that's $100,000 of what used to send to Oakhorn Valley Economic Development Council. We're not doing that anymore. The county's taking their $100,000 and giving it to us. We're taking our $100,000 and putting it in that fund, so that doesn't show as an operations expense anymore like it used to. Instead, it shows it as a transfer from our general fund, which used to write the check to Oakhorn Valley Economic Development Council, which is now just transferring that money over to the Economic Development Operating Fund where it's going to be spent. So we're spending the same $100,000, it's just in a different category. It's transfers this year instead of operations. And the ending fund balance is increasing $2.6 million, or 23%, as you can see on there. And water and sewer fund ending balances increased $1.4 million. Kind of getting their restricted monies back up where they should be. They were only $272,000 budgeted in restricted, not restricted, excuse me, fund balances last year, and this brings them up to about $1.2 million. And debt service fund ending fund balance increases as we're, it increases about $700,000, and that's primarily due to the occupation tax that we're accumulating until the call date on those $16.4 million of rec bonds. They'll be called on 2015, and any money we've collected for that food and beverage occupation tax, and the lodging occupation tax, that hasn't went to pay the regular debt service on those bonds for the first five years, will be set in there, and then we'll take it on the call date and pay off as much as we can of those rec bonds. As you can see here, this is simply the budgets by fund. Our five largest funds are at the top there, and they're the lion's share of the budget. There's 20 other funds that are in that all other funds category. There's the capital projects fund, which I already discussed in some detail, 10 special revenue funds, one of which is the Economic Development Operating Fund, another one's the LBA 40 Economic Development Fund, and there's a multitude of others. And there's a debt service fund, or some special assessment funds in the solid waste management fund, that comprise all that other $16.5 million that's in the budget. I'm not going to talk about those in a lot of detail going forward. I've mentioned some of them previously, but I'm going to focus on those five largest funds, which make up 76% of our budget. And general funds, by far the largest fund. It alone is about a third of our total budget, and it's normally what you'd expect to see in government, their general fund being by far their largest fund. In the case of our general fund, revenues increased 3/4 of a million dollars this year, about a 4.33% increase. $351,000 of that is in taxes. All of that is the sales tax increase I mentioned earlier. Property tax and all the other general fund taxes remain unchanged. The next largest increase is rent, another revenue, which goes up $309,000. Majority of that, $255,000 of it's related to MPPD lease revenue, which is increasing, as I mentioned earlier. But keynote revenues in there, and that's also increasing pretty nicely. And how close of attention you pay to the charts Beth puts in the works in progress, but that's been growing, I think, every month or almost every month since the Big Red opened its main keynote parlor. So that thing's just been doing very nicely. Intergovernmental revenue is up $94,000, or 23.4%. Almost all of that, over $90,000 of that's related to LB 1114. And LB 1114 was Senator Flood's bill related to municipal equalization funding. I could talk about that bill forever. It's been a kind of a sore point with a lot of city staff for a long time, municipal equalization funding. The purpose of that was to try and take cities that had lower-than-average per capita assessed valuation... valuations and equalize their ability to levy property tax. North Oak had a lower than average assessed value, so we should have got money out of the municipal equalization fund based on that. Matter of fact, we should have been getting about $450,000 a year.
However.
Equalization fund. However, because we had such a low tax rate, we weren't getting anything. We didn't get as much out of 1114 as I'd like to have gotten, but we're getting, what they've done is they, every cent you're below the statewide average, they knock 20 percent off of your preliminary MIF funding. So we were getting knocked way down to zero because we were way, way, way below the state average, as you can see on that one chart with all the green and one blue bar. Now they said we were going to stop that at 20 percent. So you're going to get at least 20 percent of what you should be getting, which is a lot better than nothing. It's $90,000 better than nothing, and we should be getting that every year going forward. So we sweat a lot of blood over that thing, had some heated negotiations over it. I think some people were kind of mad at me from some of the other cities, but we did get something out of it. Not as much as I thought we should get out of it, but we got something out of it. And $90,000 is bearing a poke in the eye.
Good job, Randy.
You're right. You're right.
General Fund expenditures, just list of those division by division, you'll see a lot of those who are around that 3.5 percent or maintenance level three budget. I mean, engineering street, library, auditorium, police budgets, all were at that 3.5 percent or less allowed in that level three budget. Some of the funds increased quite a bit above that. The rec budget, for instance, increased due to the cost related to the new rec facilities that I talked about earlier. Park has $86,000 of equipment over their level three budget that's causing their increase, and that has to do primarily with Keno plus a donation, they're buying that equipment. It's over and above their level three out of the Keno revenue and that one donation. Housing is budgeting $9,800 for carpet in their offices, and $92,000 was budgeted for property condemnation in the Fire Division. And then you see one of them going down substantially, and that's the auditorium, because we're not over there anymore, and that's decreased those expenses significantly. Sewer fund, let me go back a ways. Sewer fund's the second largest fund we have, and that increases $1.6 million or 15 percent. In the revenue side, they got a 4 percent rate increase planned, and we're also seeing some increased industrial usage, so we're budgeting use fees, increased $280,000. Beginning fund balance is up substantially in the sewer fund. We had a $2.19 million bond issue last year, didn't spend hardly any of it, and that's money's carried forward into the new year. And because of that, we're not budgeting as big a bond issue this year, only 3.2 million compared to 4.9 million last year. There's a $220,000 FEMA grant budgeted to pay a part of that expense for the water or the sewer mains that are rest of the plant that are being, or budgeted to be replaced this year. Water pollution control expenditures are very flat, decreasing quarter, 1/4 of 1 percent. Capital outlay decreases $450,000 in the Water Pollution Control Fund due to a portion of the $1.3 million budget for the SBR blowers being spent last year. Only new capital outlay budgeted in the Water Pollution Control Plan is $50,000 for roof replacement on their admin building. They have some large carryover capital outlay, remaining $780,000 for their SBR blowers, $500,000 for grit de-watering equipment. And Debt Service increases $374,000 because of that anomaly related to the 1011 refunding that I talked about earlier. Sewer maintenance expenditures increase 678,000 or 17 percent. Capital outlay is $680,000 increase or 26 percent. And most of that $3.9 million budgeted in sewer maintenance is carried forward from last year. There's $358,000 in there for lift station and mains on Omaha Avenue and Victory Road for proposed development going on the other side of the flood control. About $1.7 million for the Southwest Interceptor and $1.38 million for the sewer remediation west of the Water Pollution Control Plant. There is however, new capital outlay budgeted this year, $470,000 is in there to put a lift station and force main in south of the river and extend service south of the river. A portion of this also is budgeted in the Special Assessment Fund. Ending fund balance increases $938,000 due to the increases in beginning fund balance and the 4 percent sewer rate increase. This gets our unrestricted fund balance up from only $65,000 last year to $591,000 this year. Water fund's the next largest fund you'll see there, and it increases 625,000 or almost 9 percent, primarily because most of the capital outlay budgeted last year didn't get completed, being rebudgeted this year. Water charges increase about $100,000 or 4 percent. It's not involving a rate increase, simply increased consumption. $2 million of bonds are budgeted, which is a slight decrease since most of the capital outlay budgeted last year didn't get spent. We had a chance to accumulate more fees to pay for that. Largest capital outlay budget is the $3.7 million for the water transmission main into town I mentioned earlier. There's $577,000 to replace a water main on Madison from First to Seventh, and $235,000 for water main improvements on Omaha Avenue and Victory Road, and an increase in ending fund balance of $469,000. Group insurance increases $646,000 or 13 percent. Beginning fund balance increases $400,000 because of fewer claims in 1011 that we estimated when we put the budget together last year. Internal Service Fund billings increased 257,000 because of that 8 percent increase in employee and employer premiums, and personnel cost increased $153,000 due to reinsurance cost increases and estimated claims increase. And all this results in a $493,000 increase in ending fund balance. CHAF fund decreases $2.3 million primarily because of that. We're not going to be seeing the Department of Roads STP funding flowing through us now, and they have a lot of large capital outlay that they're still our budgeting. The biggest capital outlay they're budgeting is street maintenance work, but they've also got the other capital outlay. I had mentioned earlier in some detail, so I'm not going to go into that again. And ending fund balance decreases $226,000 as they spend on their prior year allocation. With that, I will cease talking and answer any questions you may have.
Questions at all? Okay. None?
Randy, just a quick one. The personnel costs that we have involved in like our part timers in the summer, do they show up in that 228.67 people, or how in the hell are they?
The part timers that work at the pools, it's the changeover all the time, and you're never getting the same employees back. We've never included them in our personnel charts. I suppose we could.
And I guess I don't think I would really want to see the part-time help included in the.
But to answer your question, they're not in there.
Okay, that's what I thought. The only other thing that I was catching in that, you know, we got 228.75, but in history it says we got 192, so we might want to change our history.
Take a look at that.
Also, Councilman, you had a question raised about the vacant positions you see in closure of 30, it shows the grades, and it has vacant positions in some of those grade levels, and you wanted me to speak to that a little bit.
Are we on that now, or is that?
Those are in the matrix, and there's just, isn't any positions in those grade levels.
We're not into that right now, are we?
Well, I thought it was appropriate at the time you were talking about. Sorry about that.
Any questions at all for Randy? Anyone? Okay, then are we ready to go forward with consideration of Ordinance Number 5224 approving the fiscal 2012-13 appropriations and the proprietary budget? After I close the hearing, I would ask for consideration of.
Your Honor, there's Ordinance 5224.
Second amendment.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. I think we've had opportunity for discussion, so seeing none, short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, adopting the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill appropriating funds for necessary expenses and liabilities, adopting the proprietary budget statement, providing for severability, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, and with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5224 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5224 on second and third.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend on second and third. Any discussion at all? If not, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5224 carries on second and third.
And with that, we'll move forward to consideration of Resolution Number 2012-35 approving the additional 1 percent increase in restricted fund authority allowed upon the affirmative vote of at least 75 percent of this council. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move consideration of Resolution Number 2012-35.
Second.
A motion with a second? Any discussion at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2012-35 is adopted.
Next would be consideration of Ordinance Number 5225 approving fiscal 2012-13 classification and pay plan.
I'd move consideration of Ordinance Number 5225.
Second.
Okay, a motion with a second. Julie, do you want to come forward and speak to this, or are you discussion? Maybe Jim?
Now we're out of change.
Okay, all right.
Jumping by.
Thanks, Councilman. Sorry about that, I was a little ahead of time there. Yeah, you had a question about the vacant positions you see in that ordinance there, and they're just in the matrix. Just in the pay plan itself, it shows those different grades, and no one obviously is in those positions, so it's just the matrix, and that was the explanation that I think Councilman Langy was looking for.
Right, I mean, the reason I brought it on up, I had had a couple, three people that had contacted me asking, okay, what are these vacancies at, and, you know, who do we have that we don't have hired that, whether they were in the budget, and I guess it needed to be clear that those dollars aren't plugged into the budget for personnel costs that way.
That's correct. And they'd see you there from a grade 39 down to a grade one, so just the matrix is
Any other questions or any other discussion on this? Thanks for the clarification. Are we ready to move forward with the short title? Thompson? Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range, repealing Ordinance Number 5177, providing for publication in pamphlet form, and when this ordinance shall take effect.
And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5225 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5225 on second and third.
Second.
Motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third, Ordinance Number 5225. No further discussion again? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5225 carries on second and third.
All right, and next is a public hearing to receive comments regarding the changing the vehicle parking fund tax request for the 2012-13 fiscal year from the amount, from the amount for the 2011-12 fiscal year. I will open this hearing and look for Randy to give us explanation on this.
This is a requirement of state statutes. Anytime the amount of property tax levied for a fund changes from the prior year amount, even if it would go down, you're supposed to have a hearing, and as part of that hearing process, there's a hearing notice published, which shows, here's what would have happened if we'd have left our tax asking the same, and applied that to the new valuation, here's where our levy rate would be, and here's what our levy rate is under the new proposed property tax. In case of the vehicle parking funds, since they always want to get 35 cents or maximum allowed levy rate, that changes every time their assessed valuation changes, and of course, assessed valuation will change every year. So you see one of these every year for the vehicle parking fund. I mean, I suppose it's theoretically possible there could be no change in assessed valuation, but it's not going to happen, so every year you're going to see at least one of these resolutions for the vehicle parking fund. It's simply a requirement of statutes, and the way they budget by trying to get the maximum property tax they can, they're going to levy the 35 cents under changing valuation, which means it's either going to go up or it's going to go down. Either way, you've got to have this hearing.
Okay, any questions at all for Randy? If not, I will close the hearing and look for a motion to, for consideration of Resolution 2012-36 approving the property tax request for fiscal year 2012-13 for vehicle parking in an amount different than fiscal year 2011-12.
I move, Your Honor. Second amendment, Your Honor.
We have a motion with a second to move as consideration stated here. No further discussion? Let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2012-36 is adopted.
All right, and under the regular agenda here, a couple of things we need to clean up. Ordinance Number 5223, which was amended at the August 2020 meeting to include Norfolk Avenue, and that was passed on first reading only, so it's back before us tonight. Ordinance Number 5223 to prohibit parking on the non-paid portion of a cul-de-sac. I'm going to let it be introduced that way and let the short title read it.
Your Honor, we're Ordinance Number 5223, Your Honor.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, a motion to approve on second. Any further discussion at all? If not, short title, yes?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 24-153 of the Official City Code to include a parking prohibition on the non-paid portion of a cul-de-sac, to amend Section 24-154 to address parking in a cul-de-sac and to reflect current angle parking areas, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5223 carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5223 on third reading. Second.
A motion with a second to pass Ordinance 5223 on third reading, again. If you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5223 carries on second, on third reading.
Okay, and consideration of Ordinance Number 5226 to amend Section 24-164 to restrict parking on both sides of North Sixth Street from 88 feet north of the property line. Again, I would ask if there's any need for discussion on this. I think there has been some, and certainly, short title will probably give us more of the information, unless you want to discuss further. Pardon me? No, it hasn't been introduced. Let's introduce it.
I'd introduce Ordinance Number 5226, Your Honor.
Thanks very much.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for consideration of Ordinance 5226. Beth, you want to give a short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 24-164 of the Official City Code to prohibit parking in two areas on North Sixth Street near the Norfolk Senior High School, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5226 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5226 on second and third reading.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Have no discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance 5226 carries on second and third.
Last is consideration of Ordinance Number 5227 amending Section 2-5 of the code to update the city's comprehensive fee schedule.
Your Honor, I'd introduce Ordinance 5227 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
A motion with a second? A motion with a second? Discussion on this? If not, are we ready for a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 2-5 of the Official City Code to update the comprehensive fee schedule, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5227 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Number 5227 on second and third. Second.
Motion with a second to suspend and pass Ordinance Number 5227 on second and third. Again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5227 carries on second and third.
Okay. Seeing nothing additional on this agenda, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate all the time put into this meeting tonight.